I think I clicked on the wrong sue there. There we go. Okay, we're streaming live on YouTube. Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing of the Cumberland County Commissioners and Staff regarding American Recovery Plan, American Rescue Plan Act funds. We are going to spend the bulk of tonight's hearing from members of the public who've registered to speak. I want to take just a quick moment to introduce who's here from Cumberland County, and there will be a very brief PowerPoint presentation. The purpose is just to get everybody the same level of background on what has brought us to the point that we're at tonight and what our plan for identifying uses of these funds in the short and medium and long term is going to be going forward. So I'm Travis Kennedy. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Cumberland County Government. Jim Gailey is the County Manager, and we have, we also have several other members of county executive staff who are observing the meeting tonight, but who are not joining us on screen so we can keep the focus purely on the speakers. So we have staff from our Finance Department, from our Special Projects Department, and from our Community Development Department observing. We also are joined by three Commissioners live tonight. Two of our Commissioners had conflicts, but they've committed to watch the video later on. I'll ask our three Commissioners just to introduce themselves and what part of the county they represent, beginning in alphabetical order by last Dean Commissioner Cludier.
Hi, I'm Jim Cludier. I represent all of Portland except for Precinct 5-2, which is out north during.
Thank you, Commissioner Coward.
Well, I'm Tom Coward. I'm District Four, which is, which is Cape Elizabeth, South Portland, Westbrook, and the part of, the part of Portland that Jim Cludier doesn't have.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Retonis, I think maybe having some technical difficulties. I think we can hear you, but we can't see you. Commissioner Retonis?
Oh, hi there. I am out in the rural our community. I am District Two, Casco, Raymond, Falmouth, Naples, Harrison, Gray, and Gloucester.
If you missed portions of that, Commissioner Retonis represents District Two, which is sort of north of Sebago Lake, all the way down to Gray. So we're going to very briefly walk through a PowerPoint that I had mentioned earlier. Let me just share my screen here. I'll try and do this as quickly as possible, but I do just want to give everybody the same background before we open up for public comment. Some of the things that you see in this presentation may cause you to adjust your comments, so it might be useful to hear these, some of these details upfront. So how we get here? Congress passed and President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan, allotted about $350 billion to state and local governments. Cumberland County's total allotment is $57.3 million. The payments are split into two tranches, so we received one payment in May, half of that amount, about $28.6 million. The second payment will arrive no later, or I'm sorry, no sooner than a year after the first one. So sometime probably after May 2022. Treasury Department has given us interim rules. We expect final rules later in the summer, but those rules have given us some guidance on what we can spend the money on broadly in these five points: supporting the public health response, addressing negative economic impacts, replacing public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, and infrastructure projects specifically water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Not allowed, that list is a little bit longer, and we'll probably get a little bit longer again still. In general, using the funds to reduce taxes or pay debt or legal settlements to put money in ready day funds, extraordinary funds to do a pension account, infrastructure outside of water, sewer, or broadband unless it was a project that was previously planned to be performed, and then the funding went away during the pandemic. So unless it fits into that category, infrastructure funds can only be used on water, sewer, or broadband projects. And general economic development or workforce development that is not related to the pandemic. So obviously, in Cumberland County, we saw a significant impact to tourism and in some other industries, childcare, healthcare, economic development outside of categories that we can determine were impacted by the pandemic wouldn't qualify, and they will take the money back if we spend it wrong. So one thing that's unique to Cumberland County that we just want to make sure that all of our residents are aware of, because we have more than 250,000 residents, we're required to submit a report called a Recovery Plan Performance Report to the Department of Treasury every year. It's based on some metrics that Treasury will eventually give us and some others that we determine on our own. And we have to report annually showing how well we're doing, meeting the guidelines that they've given us and that we've established ourselves. Cumberland County and the State of Maine are the only entities in Maine required to do this, just because we're the only ones who exceed that population minimum. So this is just a little bit more about that plan. The first report is due August 31st, and we, we think it's unlikely that we'll know entirely what needs to go into that plan until sometime next month, so it will probably be pretty slim this first year. But otherwise, every year, currently, the end of August is when those reports will be due. Quick, a quick summary of key dates, July 9th is the deadline to submit comments on the Treasury's final rule. So some of the things that we hear from you tonight may help in guiding us in asking for specifics on those rules, whether there are certain things that the public is interested in, that we don't know if they qualify for funding or not. This could offer us some useful guidance on what we want to ask for. Sometime in mid to late July, we'll, we'll receive the final rules, at which point we'll feel more comfortable spending some funds. The deadline for the first county interim report and that annual recovery plan performance report is currently the end of August. We, we think there's a chance that that could, that could change, but so far, it's the end of August. The end of October is a quarterly report that we'll have to file quarterly, obviously. So the end of December 2024, which is just over three years from now, we have to have obligated all of the funds. Doesn't mean we have to have spent them all. Treasury is aware that there's going to be a very long line for contractors and resources, and it's unlikely that everybody will be able to have spent all of their, their funds by the end of 2024, but we have to have obligated them. We have to have said where they're going, and then we have two more years to, to empty out that bank account, to have spent all the money, and all the work has to be completed. So basically, the process that every government in America is undergoing right now, state, county, and municipal, is identifying their own government needs, which is the, you know, the lost revenue, required responses that we need to take to the pandemic and future pandemics. That work is being done by county staff right now. We've been given pretty clear formulas from the Department of Treasury on how to identify those losses and those needs. So that should not require a long time for county staff to identify. Regional needs is what we're here tonight for. We, we expect that a large majority of the funds that come into Cumberland County will not be needed for that first bullet. So we, we hope and expect to invest a lot of these ARP funds in our broader community. So that's the, the, those five bullets that I showed you earlier, aside from the one of them that listed government loss, that's everything else would go into this category. We're identifying it through outreach like we're doing tonight. This is the first official event where we're welcoming public comment. We also have a public comment page on the Cumberland County website. Those of you who are speaking tonight, you're of course welcome to also submit your comments in writing on the county website. Those of you who are viewing on our YouTube page, but either missed the deadline or chose not to submit comment at any point in time, until we've obligated all of these funds, you can go to CumberlandCounty.org/ARPa. That's our clearinghouse page for all American Rescue Plan details. And if you scroll down near the bottom, there's a link that will take you to a public comment page. Feel free at any point in time to submit comment there. Those comments will be delivered to the Commissioners regularly as we collect them. So what we've done so far, our Community Development Office has surveyed residents across the region. We've opened the public comment. We're holding this event right now. County staff has begun some initial conversations with area leaders, nonprofits, experts in state government and municipal government to try and begin to identify the regional needs that we think fit into the ARP's guidelines of what we can spend money on. So we're going to continue drilling down category by category, but some of the things we've identified right away, and of course, we want to hear more from you tonight, housing and homelessness, economic development, tourism, substance use disorder and behavioral health, sewer water and broadband, childcare and education, and potentially some direct household supports for people who really need it. We're going to hold three regional meetings with government leaders over the next couple of weeks. These meetings will include county commissioners, municipal leaders, and state legislators. The goal of these meetings is both to do what we're doing with you all tonight, ongoing, which is identifying needs that qualify, but also, in this case, opportunities where we may be able to leverage each other's resources. The state got money, the counties got money, the towns got money. There may be ways where we can combine forces to both save money by taking advantage of economy scale and not competing with each other, but also potentially doing some bigger, better things collaboratively. So those meetings are starting actually this week. We'll present in August to the county commissioners our, our estimate of county needs, and then we'll begin to report on what we're learning about regional needs, in particular, the emergency ones that we think probably will need funding sooner than later in this first tranche of funds. In September and October, we'll drill down further. We'll hopefully be able to give some solid recommendations to the Commissioners on places that those funds might be useful to invest right away and hopefully move forward in that sort of early fall window into making some regional investments. Ongoing, as I mentioned, the public comment portal will be open until all of our funds are obligated. This is certainly not your, your last opportunity to speak to us. We don't expect to, to assign $57.3 million this week. It's going to take the course of the next couple of years. In particular, we don't get that second payment for at least a year, so we'll have some, some more time to collect public comment over the coming months and years. So that's the end of the slideshow. I promised it would be quick, and I'd like to move on now, as soon as I can figure out how to stop sharing, into public comment. And the process that we're going to take is I have the list of attendees, and what I'll do is I'll call your name, and I will call the name of the person who's scheduled to speak immediately after you, so you know that your turn's coming up. When it's your turn, I'll promote you to a panelist, and then we'll ask you to give your, your comments. We're asking people to stay at around three minutes if you can. And then, after you've spoken, I'll remove you from the panelist list. You're welcome to stay in the attendee list, but if you'd like to leave, of course, by all means, you can do that. You can join us over at CumberlandCounty.org/live to watch on YouTube if you prefer to do that. So unless anybody, unless Jim or the Commissioners or anybody has anything else they want to add before we get started, I'd like to welcome our first speaker, and it's going to be Camelia from Youth and Family Outreach. Is there anything first before I bring Camelia in that I missed, or Commissioner Coward?
Yeah, just, just I wanted to, in advance, thank all the folks who are participating in this. We have had, you know, discussions at the county level about, about this, and we really, really want to have input from the public about where this money should go. It's an ongoing process as, as Travis has outlined, we've got, we've got, you know, months to work all the details out, and we have our own ideas, but, but, you know, we are looking for comments from any members of the public who are interested either now or as the process, as the process goes on. So as Travis has outlined, we've got plenty of time to submit comments. We will, the Commissioners will find out about those, and we will, you know, obviously, take into account whatever, whatever needs are out there. So thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Camelia Babson-Haley has joined us. After Camelia, and I'm sorry, folks, the list is populated in alphabetical order, but that might give you an idea of when you're up, will be Carrie Lewis. So Camelia, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's been my honor to serve as the Director of Youth and Family Outreach for the past 21 years. As a longstanding community anchor in the densely populated West Bayside neighborhood, Youth and Family Outreach operates a full-day, year-round, nonprofit, early care and education program, serving children six weeks to five years of age and their families, with the primary goals to alleviate the effects of poverty, ensure children are prepared to succeed in K-12 education, and parents can, can complete their education and enter the workforce. We prioritize a 60-40% split in subsidy versus private pay tuition to not only operate sustainably, but to model diversity. Our classrooms and teachers represent a global community, and children from any background see themselves reflected in their school environment. We are nationally accredited and support teachers and community members on their path to a degree. While COVID has brought national attention to a fact that we in the industry know very well, that there is no workforce without childcare, YFO has been working on a solution to our waitlist and how to best support more working families. Our project directly addresses one of the approved ARPA fund categories, negative economic impacts. The facts remain true. Cumberland County has the highest rate of all parents with young children working statewide at 76.7%. Cumberland County is lacking quality childcare options for working parents. Increasing access to affordable childcare directly supports employers in Cumberland County, and Portland's lack of affordable housing exacerbates the financial strain on low-income families raising young children. Through an innovative partnership with the Portland Housing Development Corporation, we will co-locate high-quality childcare and affordable housing. The project will host nine infant, toddler, preschool, and pre-K classrooms, adult learning classrooms, and a career resource space for families. And it will allow us to employ 28 full-time staff and teachers, including 11 new positions, increase our number of available childcare slots from 58 to 107, and add 60 affordable housing units to Cumberland County. This education and housing center will transform the Bayside neighborhood and serve as a beacon for community inclusion. Portland Housing Development Corporation will provide the housing management, and both organizations will share in the annual housing revenue, again, an example of effective collaboration and financial sustainability. Federal and state investment in this building a brighter future project will allow the project to be completed on time, so we can open our doors to serving more young children and their working parents, and effectively contribute to Cumberland County's economy. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Camelia. Does anyone have any questions for, for Camelia before we bring in the next speaker? Great, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cludier.
Prove I knew how to do some of them.
Commissioner, maybe I'm mute, Commissioner?
Jim, you muted yourself.
Can you hear me now? I just, I just want to encourage the presentation just made, plus anyone else who's, has programs that they wish to promote, to also send us at least a brief summary, so that we have something tangible in front of us as the months progress on. It's going to, we anticipate that we're going to hear from a lot of people, and it would be very helpful if, if you could do that for us, Camelia, and everyone else. I mean, obviously, that, the Commissioners are well aware of the, you know, demographic circumstances, and, and, and the economic distress issues are, are very high on our consideration list, of course. So, thank you, that's all.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Camelia. And I'm next bringing in Carrie Lewis, who is coming live right now. Carrie, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. My name is Carrie Lewis. I am the General Manager of Portland Water District. We're a quasi-municipal organization overseen by a Board of 11 trustees, and you probably are aware that we provide water for drinking and fire protection to 200,000 people in 11 communities. We provide wastewater services to six communities, and every aspect of our work contributes to the public health and safety of Cumberland County residents and businesses. We maintain those essential services throughout the pandemic, being acutely aware of their increased importance during that public health crisis. Our ratepayers are taxpayers in the communities that you represent, and any ARP funds that would be awarded to Portland Water District will directly benefit your constituents who are users of our services. We have received no federal pandemic money to date. We have taken and continued to take many steps at our cost to help our customers and protect our employees during the pandemic. We deferred a water rate increase by 10 months. We halted disconnections for non-payment before we were required to do so. We continue to waive late fees, and we offer flexible payment plans. Among other things, we continue to voluntarily offer emergency paid sick leave and expanded FMLA benefits for childcare to our employees. Again, we've received no federal pandemic money. PW has previously submitted to you a list of water and wastewater projects that would meet the ARP deadlines for incurring and spending monies. Many are shovel-ready. I selected the infrastructure category for my comments today, but funding received for any of these projects would also fit the categories of public health response and addressing negative economic impacts. Some of the projects are in our water system. ARP funding applied to any of these projects would reduce the cost of the project, plus interest if bond financed, to water ratepayers throughout Cumberland County. So one project would impact every single water user in Cumberland County. Projects include work at our water treatment plant, replacing aging water mains, and building interconnections with adjacent communities for emergency backup water supplies. Some of the projects are in a wastewater system. Different from water, any ARP funding applied to a wastewater project would reduce the cost to the municipality at least dollar for dollar, even more if the project would otherwise have been financed and incurred interest costs. So I'd like to highlight just one project in particular, to see if I can tempt you to, to send some funding our way. We have, we're developing a wastewater treatment facility for North Wyndham Service Center, the Lake Region's business hub. This is a very green project designed to solve an ongoing problem. There's a polluted aquifer in Wyndham that's affecting the groundwater in the area, and it's migrating towards Sebago Lake and the Chrisup Scott River. The project really cannot be built without federal or state grant money. Any contribution would be awesome. A million dollars would go a long way to covering the design. Five million would really get things going, and if you really want to make a splash, 10 million would be even better. That said, Portland Water District ratepayers, your constituents, would be very grateful to receive any ARP funding for any or all of these projects, and I want to thank you for your time tonight and for including the input of Portland Water District in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for Carrie before we move on to our next speaker? Seeing none. I'm sorry, I didn't give you a heads up. David, David Kane is our next speaker, followed by Eamon Dundin. We should be bringing David in any moment now.
Well, Carrie has all the comments that I, I would be saying, so I don't have any further comments.
No further comments?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kane? Seeing none. Thank you, David. Eamon Dundin is next. I'm going to bring you into the meeting right now. Okay, Eamon, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Eamon Dundin, and I'm the Director of Advocacy at the Portland Regional Chamber of Commerce. We represent 1,200 businesses employing over 65,000 majors in eight cities and towns, including Portland, Westbrook, Gorham, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, Scarborough, Falmouth, and Cumberland. We would urge two key priorities for ARP funding from the county as our region recovers from COVID-19. The first, which you've already heard about this evening, is childcare. We hear consistently from our members that a lack of quality affordable childcare remains an intractable obstacle to recruiting and retaining workers. This reality has only become clearer as COVID has exposed longstanding capacity deficits for childcare slots, which keep parents on the sidelines of the workforce. In a recent survey, 61% of our members reported that their employees had trouble finding childcare. This translates into very real business impediments, with 75% of our members saying that their employees receive, experience unplanned absences due to lack of childcare, and nearly 50% saying that the lack of childcare has caused issues when it comes to employee retention. The Chamber, along with other, other organizations in the county, including United Way and Starting Strong, among others, have been working on various efforts to interpret the latest local, state, and federal childcare policies to identify gaps where investment is most needed. All of the partners on those efforts would be more than willing to meet with the county at some point as you continue your stakeholder outreach project, process to further discuss these efforts and define the most acute needs of the system, which include building a childcare workforce, supporting families, and navigating a system, and improving our data collection efforts and reporting to enable long-term assessment of gaps and needs in the region. The second priority I wanted to speak to is broadband. I will not go into the well-documented need for broadband that's been laid bare by the connectivity demands of the last year that you're all well familiar with, but we do feel the county has a unique ability to spearhead key investments in regional broadband planning and expansion. The county should seek to convene all of the municipalities to enact a regional readiness process for broadband planning, data collection, and project development. This will ensure that our region is ready to receive investment from the forthcoming creation of the main connectivity authority and the subsequent disbursement of federal and state funds. Coordination on planning and priority project selection will go far in ensuring that we have a seat at the table when these funding decisions are made, and that our region receives funding commensurate with the outsized economic contributions we made to the state as a whole. Other counties, including Avristic, Lincoln, Washington, and Oxford, are already tackling this, this readiness work and priority project selection, and we need to get that work done in Cumberland County if we hope to deploy broadband in a robust and expeditious manner. As you examine ways to support both of these areas, so critical to the success and growth of Cumberland County, in addition to the other worthy investments you may consider, we urge that you work collaboratively with the county's municipalities and the state to ensure that this generational investment opportunity achieves maximum input and minimal waste by aligning efforts across all levels of government through careful consultation and partnership. This moment is too important to allow for inefficiencies created by duplicative efforts, so it is essential that all levels of government are aligned on addressing the needs of our community. I thank you for your time this evening and for your consideration and public input on this important matter. On behalf of the Chamber, I would ask that you please support investments in childcare and broadband to support our economy and the working families that make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Eamon. Are there any questions for Mr. Dundin? Commissioner Coward?
Yeah, not, not particularly a question, but just a comment. The county's been working on broadband for a while. We were a little bit ahead of the, ahead of the curve on that. I really welcome your comment. I think, I think both of these, both of these things are, are high on everybody's list. So thank you for your, thank you for support on that, and, and, you know, keep an eye on us as we, as we go ahead. But, but I really value, I really value your, your comments about that.
Thank you, absolutely. And yeah, I've read through the playbook that came out a couple years ago, so I'm familiar with that, and looking forward to seeing some more progress on those efforts.
Yes, and your, and your point, your point about, your point about, you know, let's not, you know, let's not everybody run their own show is, is, is well taken. I think we're, I think we're already on board with that, but, but thank you for the, thank you for the reminder. I'm, I'm hopeful we can do this. We got a lot of, a lot of people in Cumberland County who really need better connectivity than they've got, and that would really be a driver of economic, long-term economic development to get that done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner, Heather Martin is up next, just so, so you know, Heather, Commissioner Cludier?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments as well, in particular about, excuse me, childcare issues. The, the quandary that I'm sure I'm going to wrestle with for a while, and maybe others will too, is whether there is, because this is kind of a one-shot, or really a two-shot opportunity, and we're for much better reasons than, than having no money, we don't want to have a repeat of why we need a we need to we need this in the first place. I'm kind of trying to think of where a capital infusion would be helpful to the childcare system. And 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 that, if 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 in all your deliberations going forward, you you have some ideas on that, would love to hear them.
Yeah, absolutely. And and I think, you know, we're just we're working as part of the Boston Federal Reserve's Working Communities Challenge right now to identify some of those policy gaps in Cumberland County, and we're working with a team that includes folks from, you know, obviously the Portland area, but all the way out to Bridgeton to to look at the whole county. And I think, you know, we have some very initial ideas that will probably firm up more as we move more towards the fall timeframe. But just off the bat, we've, you know, I think we're going to look at a business incubator that sort of gets some more childcare businesses off the ground right now to address that immediate capacity need. And hopefully, you know, that could be a one-time expenditure where you invest in creating these new childcare businesses that, you know, might just need those startup costs to get going, and then could be more sustainable on their own in the long run. But hopefully, more to come on that as as we get through the summer and the fall months and hope to to work with you all on that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great.
Eamon, thank you very much. I'm going to bring in Heather Martin. And after Heather will be Jackson Beck.
Hello, thank you. Just get that video going. Thank you for hosting this forum tonight. I appreciate that. My name is Heather Martin. I work for the Maine Association for the Education of Young Children, and I'm a resident of Raymond. And I'm here to talk about childcare, which already seems to be like a popular topic tonight, so feeling right at home. I did want to share my organization, along with the Family Childcare Association of Maine, the YMCA Alliance of Maine, and the Maine Head Start Directors Association, had sent out a survey this spring to kind of get a feel of the landscape of childcare as we're we're a year into the pandemic. So, I did want to share a few of those data points with you, as Cumberland County had our biggest response on that survey. So, in the statewide survey conducted, less than 20% of childcare programs had had their financial needs met through the current federal relief funding. 43% of family childcare programs cited a growing waitlist to be their biggest challenge, while 58% of childcare centers cited staff shortages. 44% of childcare centers are were operating at a deficit, while 29% of family childcare providers were operating at a deficit. So, I just kind of wanted to share some of those numbers with you and kind of what's indicative of going on in the childcare landscape. You know, and just reading through some of the interim final rules for the recovery funds, there are some opportunities I wanted to highlight. You've heard some things already. Within that language, it emphasizes that there are some head start opportunities to increase head start partnerships in communities. There is also opportunities to support public pre-K and private partnerships, some models which are already happening in some of our communities within Cumberland County. You know, we've talked about startup childcares, as Eamon was just talking about, thinking about how we can support startup childcare programs and and help them get off the ground so that they are sustainable. We do have a model through CEI in Maine that has been very successful with that in rural counties and and within Lewiston, which would be a great model to look at. And I think one of the biggest things I want to highlight is, as we're talking about the opportunity from premium pay for essential workers here, is to know how much the childcare workforce is struggling. You know, I think what's unique about childcare businesses, which are predominantly small, private-owned businesses, is that they work a little different in a capitalist market. You cannot increase wages for your employees unless you're able to raise wage, raise your tuition on your families. And as many of you probably know, the cost of childcare is pretty astronomical for families. So, if there could be support for the workforce through some premium pay efforts, there are some examples going around nationwide, how these ARPA funds are being used to do that. Seattle has a model of how that's going on now, and I'm working with national partners to see how other counties are supporting wages in that way. So, I would be happy to share any of those models with you as I gain more information for that. And a few other opportunities I want to highlight, we know that out-of-school childcare programs picked up an immense responsibility this year, working with a lot of hybrid learners and and supporting that learning in their programs. And it would be great to see some funding help to support some of their enrichment programs, out-of-school enrichment programs, going forward with that, as well as investing in expanding home visiting services in Cumberland County. Recognize that that's an important piece of child development. And I think that's all I have for you now, but I do have some information, you know, more in the weeds that I would love to share with you at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions for Heather before we move on to Jackson Beck? Commissioner Coward?
Yes, Heather, thank you very much. Please, please submit whatever information you have on on our portal. I'd love to get that. I'd love to get some details of that. I'm I've you know, my wife and I struggle with childcare. We used to say we we tried every every possible configuration of childcare as, you know, two profession, you know, professionals in a with a family of no longer small children, but they weren't small once. And I've been there, done that, and I would love to love to just have the information, whether we can, you know, I think Commissioner Cludier has already pointed out, this money is like a one-shot deal. We may, we're probably not going to be able to set up a system where we subsidize pay for, you know, for childcare workers. But I'd love to see what the models are out there, and and if we can, if we can, you know, work that into what we do, I'd love to love to have the information. So, please be sure to send that along to us.
I'd be very happy to. Thank you.
So, next is going to be Jackson Beck. And after Jackson will be Kelsey Halliday Johnson. So, Jackson, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Jackson Beck. I'm a Program Associate at the Bureau Institute of Justice and also a practical supporter in my hometown. Bureau is a 60-year-old national nonprofit that helps build safe and healthy communities and has been working in Maine to zero out girls' incarceration and expand crisis services that reduce overreliance on police. Funding from the American Rescue Plan Act can help move Cumberland County closer to these important goals. So, first, Cumberland County's girls can be supported in the county instead of in juvenile detention with aid of ARPA funds. Since 2018, Bureau has worked with the Cumberland District Attorney and State Department of Corrections to help drastically reduce girls' incarceration. Evidence shows that incarcerating young people is both harmful and counterproductive to public safety, and that girls have complex needs that should be addressed in the community instead. Existing diversion programs like the Youth Advocate Program and Opportunity Alliance can be expanded, and housing is also a critical part of diversion, and the county should provide more walk-in short-term housing options for girls and gender expansive youth in crisis, including services for victims of gender-based violence and trafficking. These services can all be funded through ARPA, according to the Treasury's interim final rule. The rule includes services to child welfare-involved families and foster youth, which supports diversion programming. And short-term housing options could be funded through supportive housing programs, housing vouchers, or housing navigation assistance, also named in the rule. We estimate that the cost for these programs to keep vulnerable girls out of juvenile detention is $7.5 million in total over the next three years. Second, to address crisis response, we know police often serve as default first responders for behavioral health crises, which is a dynamic the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration calls unacceptable and unsafe across the country. Many jurisdictions are beginning to implement non-police responses to crisis calls, including through 911. And as Maine declared through the passage of LD 1306, which Bureau helps representative morale is developed, the state's 911 system will work toward the ability to deliver crisis response services through the 911 system, in addition to police, fire, and EMS. And according to federal guidelines, this means ensuring the availability of crisis line specialists, mobile crisis teams, and crisis centers that offer short-term stabilization and treatment. So, the Treasury's interim final rule lists all three of these core elements as eligible for ARPA funding, specifically mentioning crisis hotlines and worm lines, crisis intervention, and behavioral health treatment. ARPA also ensures that, starting next spring, qualifying mobile crisis intervention services will be eligible to receive Medicaid funds with an 85% federal match. So, the county must both further invest in mobile crisis teams, but also start coordinating with Maine's Department of Health and Human Services to participate in this funding opportunity. So, to conclude, investing in young people in crisis response is vital to the county's efforts to rebuild after the pandemic, and ARPA funding provides a rare opportunity to do just that, and we're more than happy to discuss all this further when your time permits. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackson. Are there any questions for Jackson before we move on? Commissioner Cludier?
Particularly in relation Mr. Beck, to the young girl exploitation issues, do you have data available that that we could look at that would help us understand the scope of that issue in Cumberland County?
Yeah, I I don't have that handy, but I I believe my colleagues at Bureau do, so we'd be happy to share and submit written comments on that.
Be very glad to have it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jackson. Up next, I'm going to bring in Kelsey Halliday Johnson. And after Kelsey will be Kenneth Capron. Kelsey, welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Wonderful. My name is Kelsey Johnson. Thank you so much for hosting this listening forum, and this is all incredibly exciting moving into it. I'm Kelsey Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of SPACE, which is a multidisciplinary arts nonprofit based in downtown Portland, Maine. I'm really excited to hear advocacy for childcare and prison and crisis response reform, and I'm sure there are a lot of very worthy topics as well. So, I guess as a personal reflection, three broader things I want to talk about why an arts nonprofit is here is just thinking about how public health is related to mental health as well, and the arts are a critical part of how we rebuild the soul of this country after a really difficult time apart and bring people together. Arts organizations like ours provide alternative adult, youth, teen, and family education. Everyone deserves access to the arts in a 21st century community across income, race, education, ability, age, and family structure. Yay, childcare, so parents can have a night out. And third of all, the arts is a creative economy, and we continue to, you know, we all know the motif of starving artists. We regularly work with artists that are food insecure or are sustaining opportunity to opportunity. They themselves are small business owners, and they were impacted, especially the performing arts, at a disproportionate level this past year. And we need to work on a rescue plan for all of those vibrant artists. We, as SPACE, are home to countless events, exhibitions, screenings, performances. But we are also home to a thriving studio-building community of 50 artists and makers in Cumberland County, in addition to a statewide grant-making program. In the years leading up to the pandemic, SPACE distributed about $100,000 in re-granting funds for small project-based grants for artists to bring art into their own communities. This could happen at places including the Jackson General Store, as well as public land trusts, anywhere in their community that created programs, engagement, and new ways to think about the arts and create opportunity. The latest data for the arts, and and I should also mention, last year, we got into relief grant-making and gave over $230,000 to artists throughout the state of Maine with our relief grant-making programs. The latest data for the arts in America from the Arts Artists for America, released in 2020, shows that arts and cultural productivity accounted for 4.5% of our GDP, or $877.8 billion in 2017. Portland was named by the NEA as having the second highest arts attendance of any major metropolitan area outside of Denver, Colorado. Three in four adults in Cumberland County are attending arts events annually, and we would like to invite them and welcome them back and invite them to participate in the small business community in our downtowns and revitalize the towns across this county and across the state. We look forward to presenting a proposal for you and thinking about how SPACE is part of the economic recovery about public health, and thinking about the fact that both through our direct grant-making projects, which would probably be through the NEA's opportunity with the APR, but thinking about how to make grants to artists, and then additionally, you know, how to commission public art in a coalition with other organizations across Cumberland County to talk about the various infrastructure and place changes that are happening in communities. While we do this work, I also hope that I can advocate that we will always include equity and justice and think about who in our community isn't being served. I'm so inspired by the conversations already, and I look forward to seeing what you make grants in. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Are there any questions? Commissioner Coward?
Just the same comment I've been making a lot. Feel free to send us information. I'm I'm particularly interested in this second-highest attendance at art arts events in the country, which is, you know, it's not just food in the Portland area. It sounds like it's arts, too. And, you know, you know, my family is a consumer of those of those things, so I'd be interested to see whatever whatever you can send along. I'd love to love to take a look at it, and and thank you very much for making the comment. I think this is something we'll certainly take under under advisement to you know, digest along with everything else, but thank you.
I cannot hear you.
I'm I'm sorry, I was muted. Kenneth Capron. Floor is the floor is yours.
Thank you. I think I know a couple of you folks. I wanted to say thank you, especially for reaching out. I mean, it's very rare for a politician to get 50-some-one million dollars and reach out and ask people how they'd like it spent. Usually, they have it tagged towards some project of their own choosing. It may end up that way. We we don't know entirely, but I wanted to make a couple of suggestions and let you know that I'd also like to make a couple of submissions later on, because obviously, Mr. Coward would like to see more documentation, something with a feelie touch to it. But it would certainly be to to the county's advantage to find ways to increase the funds through matching programs, matching grant programs, matching state funds, matching private funds, whatever whatever way we can. And also to consider loan loans with a revolving loan fund, which could become a permanent setup. I know I was involved a long time ago in over in Ferry Village, a revolving loan fund for people to fix up their houses. The idea was, obviously, when they pay off their loans, you have the pot of money back again, and you can loan it out to somebody else. Unfortunately, it didn't work out that way. But but I mean, some sort of revolving loan fund so that people could borrow to 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 do things that might be a little bit less welcome from banks. We might be willing to take a higher risk, but that's a that's a way to expand these these dollars into more than they are, and certainly adds a long-term factor to this. So, and and certainly, the longer the cycle, the better. I had also wanted to, and it will submit, I had a developed a plan back a few years ago on on workforce housing for single moms, where the daycare was in in the facility itself and run by one of the moms or the dads or whatever. But I'll submit that plan to you. It was pretty self-sustaining. I would like to sit down and talk with with somebody about my my transportation research that I've been doing on a new form of transportation. If you haven't heard about it yet, it's called MicroRail, but it has county and statewide implications, and it it could be kind of interesting. Not looking for money, but might in the long run be looking for a loan guarantee, that type of thing. So, I'm not asking for money. That's odd for a non-politician. I wonder if you Tom's laughing, and I hate to bring this up, but I I wonder if there's any chance that you would, as a county, consider pulling the homelessness issue away from Portland and making a county issue. I'm not wanting to spend, you know, $20 million on it, but you know, there are there are people from other towns besides Portland who come to the shelter, and and we now have a petition on the books that's going to ask if you want shelters to be limited to 50 people or not. So, you know, you know, Portland is one of the only cities in the country that has its own public homeless shelter. Everyone else is you know, you know, Portland is one of the only cities in the country that has its own public homeless shelter. Everyone else is done private. Maybe you could find a way to help other private supporters, travel street or or whatever, to to build more out in the outskirts of the city. So that was a little risky suggesting that. I expected bottles to be thrown back or something, but another thought is on historical items, and one in particular comes to mind, and that is Fort Gorges. You know, we've got a, we've got a gem out there. This is like like having a diamond in the middle of the mine, but mine's too deep. That that particular historical society would bring a lot, this is my impression, would bring a lot of people to Portland. Especially if there's a boat that that would take you out there, or maybe some sort of a arrangement, but that's a gem that we have ignored and neglected, and and might be something the county would be interested in. I also thought of using some of this money like like we do with the CDBG. And I don't know. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure I understand completely how Portland versus Cumberland County CDBG works, but it's just a thought. And then the last thing, there's a, in the healthcare field for seniors, there's a thing called PACE. The Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly. And there aren't too many of them around, but basically what it takes, if you're on, if you're a person who's on Medicare and Medicaid, and you belong to a PACE, and you you get your services from a PACE, it's all free. So seniors get to get everything they need right in one place. And it's been tossed around by DHHS, at least in the prior administration, but it never came to conclusion or reached a decision. And and Cumberland County would be one of the few places that would really benefit from having something like that. So I was wondering if you might want to consider looking into that. That that would have remarkable benefits in greater Portland as far as healthcare for seniors. So that's my shortlist. I will send the information along. Who should I send it to?
Mr. Capron, if you if you visit CumberlandCounty.org/ARPA, scroll down near the the bottom of the page, there's a link that you click on, and that takes you to a portal where we're collecting all of the public comment and recommendations for for our.
Well, I certainly, I can't tell you how nice it is to know that people are actually actually asking how consumers might suggest sending, spending the money. Of course, I do have a low bank account. I'm more than willing to accept it directly. I'll take one for the for the team, so to say. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for Mr. Capron? For the the next speaker is Matt Marco or Markot. I think I might not have told you. Matt, Commissioner Cludier?
Yeah, Mr. Capron, I just wanted to mention, the the county actually goes through both with the kind of the extended staff, which is not a small group, and the commissioners. Every year or two, we we have a major strategic planning effort. That's a pretty serious effort, to tell you the truth. And homeless services for the county at large, not not just including Portland, has been a priority that's that's been identified. So it's, you know, it's almost prescient that you mentioned it tonight, but it is something that's on our radar screen. The just the the quick answer on CDBG for for your references. Portland has its own grant. Cumberland County is uncommon among counties in the United States in that it has a grant that was able to generate through kind of collective action of just about every other municipality in Cumberland County except Portland. And and so the actual geographic area of jurisdiction does not include for the county, does not include Portland, has its own program. And that's just the way the national program is designed. So, but thanks for coming tonight. It's very, it's an interesting list of of progress that could be made. I will say that.
You're more than welcome.
Commissioner Coward?
Yes, Mr. Capron, thank you. We're sort of neighbors, I guess. I'm I'm just off of, I'm not in, you know, not in Ferry Village, but nearby. And I certainly send your information along. I'm intrigued by the idea of developing Fort Gorges. I've often looked out there and thought, you know, if you got a kayak, you can get out there, but there's really no ferry service, and it would certainly be something to something to look at. Not sure that I'm not sure that we'll be able to do it with this with this program, but I always appreciate, I always appreciate an out-of-the-box comment about something like that. I've been a big proponent of the county expanding recreational opportunities, you know, beyond the, you know, beyond the cross-insurance arena. And so it's it's intrigued me anyway. So thank you very much for bringing it up.
My pleasure. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Capron. Joining us now, Matt, I'm sorry, I'm going to pronounce it both ways, and I might still be wrong. Matt Marco or Matt Markot. The floor is yours.
You had it right the second time, Travis, but thank you. And I hope you guys can hear me all right. Never quite sure about the broadband here in northern Cumberland County. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Matt Markot. I'm a resident of Bridgeton and the Executive Director of Luneca Land Trust, a 501(c)(3) that operates in the interior northern areas of Cumberland County. I'm also here tonight to represent Sebagel Clean Waters, which is a collaboration of nine conservation organizations and Cumberland County businesses working to protect the public water supply for the greater Portland metro area. Sebagel Clean Waters does this primarily through the development of green source water infrastructure, specifically forestland conservation. Sebagel Lake in its watershed provides drinking water to over 200,000 miners and businesses every day. It is one of only 50 surface water supplies out of 13,000 in the nation that enjoys a filtration waiver from the EPA. And this is in large part thanks to existing green infrastructure, the forested watershed of Sebagel Lake. But the forested watershed is at risk. Currently, the watershed is 85% forested, but according to a 2018 economic case study by the University of Maine, if the watershed loses another 10% of its forest cover, potentially irreversible impacts to the quality of greater Portland's water supply may occur. And this could require a large-scale infrastructure investment to compensate for that loss in water quality. So Sebagel Clean Waters is working to avoid that costly scenario through the development of green source water infrastructure like forestland conservation. In addition to source water quality benefits, green infrastructure also has the added benefits of contributing significantly to the woods products, recreation, and outdoor destination economies of communities in interior and northern Cumberland County. COVID-19 created an unprecedented demand for access to outdoor spaces in Cumberland County. At Luneca Land Trust, some of our popular trail networks at iconic conserved lands like Pleasant Mountain and Pismire Bluff saw a 70% increase in use for 2020 compared to 2019. And so far in 2021, those numbers have increased an additional 5%. So access to safe outdoor experience is a public health issue that has been exacerbated by COVID. Sebagel Clean Waters and our partners have a track record of producing measurable outcomes and have green infrastructure projects that are ready to implement. ARPA funding for this work would produce outcomes for both water quality and public health. Investment in green source water infrastructure for the Sebagel Lake watershed in Cumberland County will have permanent impacts on the public water supply in greater Portland and is significantly less expensive than the cost of built infrastructure that may be required down the road, should we not act now. The Treasury Department's interim final rule would allow for green source water infrastructure financing by aligning ARPA funds with the wide range of project types that are eligible to receive financial assistance through the EPA's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for Matt before we bring in Michael Brennan? Seeing none. Matt, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Bring in Michael Brennan next, and after Michael is Patricia Pinto. Are you there, Mike? So he might be having some technical difficulties. Let's let's bring in Patricia. And if Mike joins us, we'll just keep him as a panelist, and and he can go next. So Patricia Pinto should be joining us now. Not seeing her either. Patricia, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
There she is. Okay.
Yeah.
Welcome. You can, it's your choice if you want to turn your camera on or not. The floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let me turn my camera on. It's always nice. Okay, so thank you again for taking the time and 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 your evening to get public comment. So my name is Pat Pinto, and I am the volunteer state president for AARP Maine, not to be confused by ARPA. So ARP Maine is the American Association of Retired Persons, and and we are the nation's largest nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering Americans 50-plus to choose how they live as they age. We are a member of the Maine Broadband Coalition. And so I'm here on behalf of over 200,000 of our members in Maine. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to participate in this discussion around how you may spend the $57 million and of the American Rescue Plan monies. Where, where, again, where very much I'm speaking today primarily to fund, to talk about funding regional broadband planning and expansion. And, you know, the funding certainly comes at just the right moment after the pandemic and and a year of year of virtual meetings. You know, high-speed internet continues to be a necessity now more than ever. I had trouble tonight. I live in Portland. I'm part of, you know, I'm in Cumberland County, and I had internet troubles tonight. So we really need to look at this opportunity. And it's not just about reliability, but it's also about affordability. Affordable and reliable internet service helps older adults age-in-place productively and safely with access to telemedicine, civic engagement, friends and family entertainment, online learning, and other online applications that provide social interaction and help with health issues. Family caregivers benefit from broadband access, as well as grandchildren who need it for school and who are staying with or visiting their grandparents. Excuse me. A good broadband connection can decrease loneliness and depression, increase opportunities for furthering education, and allow services such as free caption telephone service for the hard of hearing and and some life-award programs. ARP is proud to work. We work with 71 municipalities across the state in what we call age-friendly communities. The whole process that they can go through, and ARP supports, to become an age-friendly community. And and it continually comes up in our discussions with the age-friendly communities about issues on broadband. So what I'd like to suggest, I have several suggestions for you. One is to please partner with local governments, regional agencies, and state organizations to support a consistent regional readiness process for broadband planning, community engagement, data collection, and project development. We'd like to suggest that you focus county ARPA broadband funding on capital projects that build from the new community readiness process. Also, we'd like to suggest you work with communities and partners to identify priority projects and for consideration by the new Maine Connectivity Authority, I'm sure you're familiar with. We would love to see Cumberland County coordinate a multi-stakeholder broadband dialogue via the Maine Broadband Coalition. And this is just as other counties, Roostick, Lincoln, Washington, and Oxford are already doing. So anything that we may be able to do to assist you in this project. And the pandemic certainly has revealed that this is a massive need to get Maine connected. And we urge you to help pave the way for an affordable, accessible, high-speed internet future. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. Does anybody have questions for Patricia? Thank you very much. And Representative Brennan is here and is our final speaker. So, Mike, thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
I just had a call from Augusta that I had to attend to, so I'm sorry that I got here a little bit late. But Commissioner Cludier, Commissioner Coward, Manager Gailey, and Travis Kendy, thank you for having me here tonight. It's good to see all of you. And my name is Michael Brennan. I represent District 36, which is part of Portland. And I chair the Joint Select Committee, Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs in Legislature. And I have served on the Health Coverage Committee. I'm the former mayor of Portland. I served in the State Senate. And from 1980 to 1982, I was a Cumberland County Charter Commissioner. So I've spent a lot of time looking at the county government as well. Very briefly, I want to build off some of the comments that Commissioner Coward has already made, along with Representative Cludier, that I think this is an incredible opportunity that we have with this art money and the county money to have partnerships with the state and partnerships with local municipalities, in particular Portland, that will be long-lasting and that will also extend infrastructure that's desperately needed over an extended period of time. And the very first item I just want to speak to is the dredging of Portland Harbor. And as many of you know, this has been a longstanding issue within the city of Portland. We've lost 26% of our birthing in the harbor because the silt built up around the piers has been so great. The project is shovel-ready, and and it could start. It's all permitted and ready to go this fall, but it's $28 million. And we're looking for a partnership between the state, the county, and the city of Portland and South Portland in order to move this project forward. And we're having extended discussions both in Augusta as we speak and with the city of Portland. So if we could look at a partnership with the county, the economic benefits are tremendous. Increasing water quality are significant, and this is a project that not only benefits the city of Portland, the region, but the entire state. So that's the first item I would put on the agenda. Secondly, we found out last year during the pandemic that the homeless situation in Portland across the state, the system we have is very fractured and and very tenuous. So if we could look at partnerships with the state now, there are several initiatives at the state to look at the issue of homelessness. And if we could partner with the county and the city, I think we could make tremendous strides in addressing issues around homelessness. Last year, I met with advocates that were involved in the campout in front of City Hall. And surprisingly, their their primary concern was not necessarily providing structures, but that they were looking at substance use and mental health services. So your staff has already identified that behavioral mental health is a key issue. That is clearly something that we need to address, and there are several initiatives at the state level to fund mobile crisis intervention teams and other mental health and substance use intervention projects that we could partner with the county. We can partner with the city and make a tremendous difference in the short run and would have extended benefits. And lastly, just to focus on the substance use issue, last year, we were able to get over $130,000 contract between the state and the Cumberland County Jail to start a medication-assisted treatment program. And as the police chief of Portland, Mike Sauschak, who's now the Public Safety Commissioner, he once said 75% of all crime in the city of Portland is due to substance use. And the more that we can address substance use at the county jail level and within our municipalities across the county, we're going to see a tremendous effect on crime and a tremendous effect on the utilization of Cumberland County Jail. So just to summarize again, there's all kinds of partnerships that could be extraordinarily beneficial to the county, to municipalities, and to the state. And I would just encourage you And, um, I would just encourage you to think about, uh, the potential impact of dredging Portland Harbor. Uh, assisting homeless persons with mental health and substance use issues. And, and looking at the broader issue around affordable housing. So thank you very much for having this forum, uh, providing us opportunity to have this discussion. And I look forward to working with you as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, questions for Representative Brennan? Seeing none. Great. Well, so we, we, um, uh, th- thank you, Mike. I'm going to, I'm going to send you back to the other room now. Um, so, uh, that's the, uh, full list of everybody who, um, arrived to speak. We had a few people sign up who, uh, have let me know over the course of the meeting that they weren't going to make it after all. Um, we've got a few, few people who didn't show, um, but everyone who has showed up has spoken. So, uh, commissioners, um, with your approval, I think we, uh, are probably, um, able to close public comment.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Uh, so thank you, everybody who's, who's still watching, who's watching at home on YouTube and who watches this in the future. Again, uh, there will be several more opportunities, uh, in the short and long term to offer comments on, uh, the American Rescue Plan. And, uh, we look forward to working with you all in the future. Everybody, have a good night.